...to order, this is actually a budget workshop, we're calling it a council meeting, January 23rd at 6:30. If you will rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America- And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay. So, we're back to revisit fire. I wasn't in charge then, so I'm not sure exactly where you guys left off. I apologize for that. Do you want to just jump in and, or do you want to kind of bring us back to where we're at? Please?
Yeah, yes. We're actually nowhere as far as the fire department budget goes, I mean, at least as far as the presentation is concerned. We have, we, the council decided that rather, since we didn't have enough information to present to you on that particular night about the staffing, which is the biggest part of the budget increase, that we would not do any of the budget. So, we didn't do any, did we do code? We did code though, right? We did code though, and we did the grant. All right. Yeah. So, I don't know if you, I would actually prefer if we could just get right into the staffing and then we can get, then the chief can do the budget presentation.
Okay.
Okay. So, I'm going to start out and tell you some of the things that you're going to see. This is kind of like opening arguments, right? These are, don't show anything. So, I'm sorry. I'm the, I'm the director. So, the, so what I want- Nancy started it.
She wasn't even clapping.
She told me to.
I know you did suggest it.
Yes, the power of suggestion. So, so what I wanted to say is, we've spent an enormous amount of time poring through information and data. A few, back in 2017, when we, I kind of expressed this to you already, when you added four firefighters, we had some, what I would refer to as smoking guns, or, you know, things that were, made things obvious. You won't see any of those things this time. So, what we, what we had showed you is that, that fire calls had increased significantly. We showed you that ALS, advanced life support versus basic life support calls, had switched so that advanced life support, meaning more staffing was required for ALS, advanced life support, were needed. And that wa, that was trending higher with ALS pretty rapidly. That has plateaued. So, that's not, you know, that's not trending the same way that it was. And also, the calls for mutual aid, it, when you did the last four, it showed an enormous difference. The amount that we received versus what we gave showed an enormous difference. There is a little bit of a difference, but it's not a lot. It's come down an awful lot. So, none of those indicators that we had looked at before show what was easily see, we could easily foretell and see in those. So, then we pulled out the big sheets that we have. So, you see them all over the room. They're every month of the year. And they'll explain to you what they mean, but basically, what you're going to see, every, every time you see red there, it means that the sh, the shift was operationally maxed. So, what I saw, in my eyes, I saw, I looked around at the, you know, at, at the actual data from the calls, and I thought to myself, there's too many red on here. So, basically, we have some proposals for you and, but I'm going to let the chief and, and Assistant Chief Duke go through their presentation, but I just, I just wanted to show you that we're going to show you things that aren't necessarily convincing to you, but we want to make sure that you have that information like you had the last time. Okay?
Okay.
Well, good evening. Starting off the presentation, we're going to talk about staffing. So, the, we've done a lot of work on the prejudi, presentations, looked at data, and I've asked Assistant Chief Duke to go through the whole presentation with you, and that way you get a different voice. And your, and then we can answer questions at the end, or try to explain the, the process it went through.
Thanks, Chief. So, the chief has had-
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet. Thank you. It's quite a long time.
Just the slides, right?
It's through the slides when you get to that point. It's very complicated. She knows that's what we do.
Slides, yes. Charts, no. Okay. We have to keep some surprises for later. So, as the chief said, we're going to, we're going to talk about some staffing, some staffing issues. The chief is handing out copies of the slides.
Nope, this might-
After the title slide is, is basically the, the table of contents, it just reviews what we're going to be talking about tonight. We're going to talk about some staffing things. We're going to look at our call calendars, which you can see all around the room. Excuse me. Types of calls and what they mean, community growth, and then where we go from here. We wanted to start out with a mission statement and the vision statement. We put it up there. We, we feel very strongly about both of these particular pieces. We try to look at everything we do or propose to do through the, the lens, if you will, of the mission statement. And if we find that what we're proposing to do fits into that, fits nicely in that lens, then it's probably a good idea. And if it doesn't, then it's time to reconsider. So, we just, we wanted to put that up there as a review. So, the first thing we want to look at, as we said, is, is our call volume. And as you'll see, this, excuse me, this table shows our call volume over the last nine years, starting in 2010 through the end of 2019. And you can see, as the town manager alluded to, there's a fairly steep increase from 2010 through 2018, and it, at the moment, has kind of plateaued. It actually dipped just slightly this year. But we just wanted to show you the data over that, over that, almost a decade, that in general, the call volume is, is still creeping up there. And I think it's worth noting here that the, the population didn't change substantially through that, those nine years. And we'll get to a little more of that later. And actually, in that blue arrow there, between 2017 and 2019, you'll see in late 2017 is when you added the four firefighters to our staff. So, we were running at eight up to, or, excuse me, running at nine, but potentially dropping down to eight based on vacations and sick times and things like that. Again, the town manager alluded to this, just-
I'm sorry. Just before you do that, say that statement again. Before this blue arrow, you were running at eight, dropping?
So, bef, to the, the left of the blue arrow, if you're looking at it, before staffing was added, we were dropping down to a minimum of seven. With the addition of the staffing, we went to a maximum of nine, a minimum of eight.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
No, of course. And again, the, the town manager accurately alluded to this. This, this graph shows the breakdown of our fire versus emergency medical calls over that same time period, 2010 through 2019. And as you can see, the fire versus EMS breakdown seems to be kind of settling in between, at the 65-35 to 30-70 split. Obviously, EMS is the higher percentage of the calls, and it's represented there, both in the table and in the pie charts at the bottom. Further breaking that call information down, this is EMS calls broken down by advanced life support versus basic life support. And again, what we, what we saw here was a very slow gradual increase in the percentage of ALS calls, or advanced life support calls, but nothing earth-shattering. So, again, as she said, we didn't see, we didn't see groundbreaking data here or in the fire versus EMS breakdown. But again, it's, it's worth noting that this is with a relatively stable population in town.
And the difference between ALS and BLS calls to the station is?
So, typically, we would respond automatically of, of a larger number of people to an advanced life support call in order to be able to provide all of the different, provide for all of the different care needs of the patient. It typically involves more than two personnel to do it efficiently and properly and get somebody to the hospital promptly. And then we'll get back to, we'll get to a little more on that later. Excuse me. So, this slide here reviews the mutual aid that the town manager alluded to. And as you can see clearly, as we approached the 2016-2017 time period, the mutual aid that we received is shown here in, in orange or gold, depending on where you're looking. And we were receiving a substantial amount of more mutual aid than we were providing to other communities. And then, again, in mid-2017, staffing was added. We were able to change the way we did some things, and we brought it back down to a more reasonable level. We are still receiving slightly more mutual aid than we're giving, but it is much closer than it was in that, that 15 through 17 time period. As Councilor Conig asked about advanced life support calls versus BLS life support calls, what's the difference and, and what does it mean? So, we go by the state of New Hampshire Call Coding System, which through 911 codes all the calls, alpha through echo based on severity. And by standard, we respond a five-person response, engine and ambulance to delta and echo calls. And the officer, the shift officer has discretion to upgrade the response for alpha, bravo, or charlie based on information that he or she may have about the, the building, we may have been there before, you know, any number of situations may arise that they may choose to augment the response right off the bat. So, some of those things that, that rear their head a lot, that might cause the officer to either upgrade the response immediately, or the response could be upgraded once the ambulance or the first arriving personnel arrive on the scene, are things like psychiatric and behavioral issues of the patient, where it's unsafe or inappropriate to put a patient in the back of the ambulance, take them to the hospital with a single provider, whether it be for safety reasons, liability reasons, that sort of thing, too. So, we would put a second person in the back for the safety of, of our provider and the town. Substance use and abuse is, is something I'm sure you've heard plenty about from the police department. I won't belabor that point here, but it's something that we interact with as well. And depending on the specific scenario, those types of calls can require additional personnel as well. They may not have been coded as an advanced life support call, but we all know that some of the substances that people can use and misuse can have delayed onset effects, so they may seem fine at the moment, but by the time we get to the hospital, five or seven minutes later, maybe a slightly different picture. So, they may choose to augment the response for that. I'm sure we've all noticed the, the increase in multi-story buildings above, above three stories. We have to get all of our people and all of our stuff into those buildings, and then we have to get them and our stuff and the patient back out again. And we've found that it's significantly more efficient to do that with more than two people. We can't, once we've established patient contact with somebody, we can't leave them alone. So, the only way, if we need an additional piece of equipment, the only way to get it is to get the person to the truck, versus if we have additional people on the scene, it gives us the ability to leave two people at the patient and send somebody or somebodies out to the ambulance or the other apparatus to, to bring in what we need, as well as safely carry the patient out, whether it be down the stairs, get them in the elevator, get all of our equipment back out safely and efficiently. As far as size of the patient, it's, it's widely known that Americans on the whole are not getting any smaller. Merrimack is no different. And that we're not talking about extremely large patients. We're just even talking about just bigger people, very often require more than two people to safely carry if there's even just a single set of stairs involved, as, as would be in a single-family home. So, we found that in the, in the past years, we have had some increased workers' comp claims. One of the changes that we've, that we've made is to augment our response, to put more personnel on the scene, to safely move those people. We have seen a reduction in workers' comp claims because of doing that. So, there's that. And then, another thing that, that comes into play here is, is hoarding or heavy content within the homes. There have been occasions at different places in town where it's required two to three people to treat the patient, keep, keep care going, and then another two or three people to just kind of make a path or move things, or, you know, rearrange some stuff so that we can physically fit our stretcher or whatever appliance we brought in out of the house and, and outside. And we kind of touched on low staffing and the, the potential for, increased injury potential for, for our folks. So, we'll move on. So, on a couple of slides, we mentioned that there hasn't been a substantial change in population across that 2010 through 2019 time period. This slide just re, reviews the approved, conditionally approved, and/or under construction numbers here in town. This is construction that's approved or ongoing. It's just under 1,400 residential units. And if we use the, the US Census number of 2.63 people per living unit, that gives us a potential increase of, of somewhere around 3,600 people over the time span to complete these projects. We, you know, anticipate 2018 over the next couple of years. So, that's a fairly substantial percentage increase in the population that we, that we're keeping an eye on. Which brings us to our call calendar, and I believe the town manager wanted to say something here before we get going.
So, what you're receiving is an enormous amount of information. What we wanted to show you is how we actually come up with these charts. So, Assistant Chief Duke is going to go over it with you so that you know that when you, when you see the red lines on there that I was referring to earlier, that, that they are for real and that they have, they have been properly vetted. So, I just, I, so what I asked them to do was to select a month, which is July. You have July in front of you. And Assistant Chief Duke is going to explain to you how we get from the one that you have in front of you to the one up there, just, just, just as an example. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Hang on, this is going to be a slightly bumpy ride, but not too bad. All right. So, on the chart that you're looking at, on the left-hand side, you'll see the two, first two columns are date and time. What you have in your hand is all of the emergency calls that we did in the month of July, broken down by day. So, every time that a gray bar crosses through the page there, that's the transition from one day to the next. So, the first column, as you can see, is the date, and then followed by the time of day. And then, the next two columns are the, the basic classification of the type of call, ALS transport, BLS transport, motor vehicle accident, that sort of thing. The next call just kind of breaks that down into a little more detail for us. It helps us when we're doing our, our analysis to understand why, why we sent the response that we did, looking back at it. Following that are the columns for our primary emergency apparatus. So, our two primary engines, engine one and two, our ambulances, some other things that we respond typically with. And the numbers that are in those boxes under those pieces of apparatus indicate the number of personnel that were on that particular unit when it responded to that call on that day. And then, almost over to the far right, before you get to the colored blocks, is total staff. That just represents how many people total went to that call on that given day. You'll notice on the front page, some of those, some of those boxes under total staff are a couple lines deep. That corresponds, if we go back to the far left-hand side of the page, you'll notice that the dates and times are all color-coded. So, the green color-coded calls on this chart correspond to the green color-coded calls on the staffing calendar. So, that indicates that what, that one call took place during that hour. The yellow, the yellow highlighted calls here correspond obviously to the yellow highlighted calls on the calendar indicating two in the hour, orange and pink and so on. So, this, that's how this corresponds color-wise directly to that chart. So, if we go over and for a moment, we only look at the, the second to last right-hand column where it says staffing nine at the top, because that corresponds directly to what you're looking at on the calendar on the screen. So, we went down and we did an analysis of how many people we sent to the call and how many people we had, if any, we had left in, in service at that particular moment. And so, anywhere where you see a red box with a, with a Y in it, that indicates that, yes, we were operationally maxed. And you can, it's pretty clear to see based on the number beside that, if that number is equal to or greater than the nine on-duty staffing, it's, it's pretty clear to see that we were out of people. And that's how, so that's how we arrived at the data that you see presented on that chart. And anywhere that you see a red block here on your chart, where there's a, a yes or in a reddish pink block, that corresponds to a red bar on the calendar. Yes, sir?
Matt, just, sorry to interrupt you. The difference between the pink, the Y in the end, the S in the middle, on your staffing, can you just re-explain that to me?
Yes. So, the, the staff, the two, the last two right-hand columns are staffing at nine and then staffing at 10. And the analysis that we did, that we put on- I'm sorry. Which color were you-
Can I just say something? So, the last two columns, I, I, for the, for these purposes, I ask you not to look at the 10 right now. We're just trying to, I'm not sure if that's what you were asking.
No, no, I just wanted an explanation. I know Matt kind of just hit it, and I was kind of wrapping myself around this, I'm probably struggling.
No, 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 no.
So, are you good with, let's, so as the town manager said, let's just look at the nine column for just a second, just so that we get to this chart, and then we'll, I'll be happy to answer your question.
We're going to get right to the 10. We just wanted to show how this, literally how this was done. And this only included nine, it didn't include the 10. We'll get to the 10 right after this. But we just wanted to show you how that was done. All right?
Just so I'm clear, sir, were you on the, the red and the green on the far right, or the colors on the left I provided?
On the far right.
On the far right. Okay. All right. So, yeah, so the staffing at, under the staffing nine column, the red blocks with the Y in them correspond to the red operationally maxed bars that appear on the calendar on the screen, as well as the calendars around the room. And that's where, that's, that was the staffing, obviously, that we ran with through the bulk of 2019, and that's why we analyzed it in that fashion. And I believe the town manager wanted to jump in here again, if I'm correct?
Okay. So, now that we've showed you how these are, are done, and we gave you an example of a particular month, now we're going to start and we're going to show you, starting with July again, what it, you start by seeing how many, what it looks like with a staffing of nine, and then he'll show you what it looks like with a staffing of 10, and he did that for three months of, as examples. So, visually, you can see what happens with the 10. Okay?
Thank you. So, as she said, the next thing we're going to do is, so we did the same analysis with assuming a, a 10-person staffing, which we've been running through most of December. And we re-analyzed where we would be, where we would run out of people, and that's where the, the column under staffing 10 comes into play. So, the green represents an area where, had we been at nine, we were max, we were operationally maxed, but at 10, we were not because of what we were, what other apparatus we were able to respond with. In July, in this example, there was 291 calls in the month. At a nine staffing, we had 33 instances of operationally maxed, which is what's shown on the screen. And we'll switch this to 10, and if you take a look at the screen when we switch, that's the difference that going from nine to 10 makes. It drops us down to 10 instances of operationally maxed by going to 10, yeah, excuse me, goes to 10 instances of operationally maxed with 10 people on duty, down from 33. I sure can. So, so there's nine, there's 33, and at 10, we are down to about 10 times, actually, exactly 10. And we did this, so we did the same analysis for October and December. The months were chosen at random. Actually, I believe the town manager and Mr. McCauley chose those months. So, we'll look at, we'll look at nine. Nine staffing here in October, we did 257 emergency calls. We were operationally maxed 35 times. By operating at 10 staffing, we would drop that down to 13. So, you can see a pretty substantial difference between nine and 10 there. And then, the last month that we, that we did this analysis on was December, or that we have the numbers for here. We did 301 emergency calls in December. At nine, we were operationally maxed 28 times, and then at 10 staffing, we were operationally maxed 16 times. So, there's a, there's still a pretty substantial jump there. And basically, the, the difference is in, in, from nine to 10 is it enables us to put additional apparatus on the road that we aren't able to with, with nine staffing, just because of how the mathematics of how our staffing breakdown works. And I believe that, barring any questions, I believe Mr. McCauley has something else to share.
Okay. So, we wanted to give you a overview of what we're talking about, when we're talking about 10 on shift and who's this and who's that. So, we have a total of 36 fire and rescue personnel. 28 of them are firefighter paramedics, four of them are captains, and four of them are lieutenants. There are four shifts with nine full-time personnel each. You should also take into account the daytime attendants. So, when we're talking about 10, we're talking about nine firefighters and always filling the daytime attendant, which the daytime attendant is, might be somebody that works part-time for AMR and comes over here and takes shifts over, over here. We get, I think, right now, we have about seven, or we just hired two, so we now have seven, and they come in and fill the shifts. They're fully qualified, they're either paramedics or, and you raised their wages a little while ago, so that we could get qualified people. So, when we talk about 10, we're ta, again, we're talking about the nine, making sure that the nine fire, full-time firefighters are always on shift, whether or not somebody's out for vacation or hall, or various things. And, and then the daytime attendant, they work from between 8:00 AM to midnight, and we're proposing to always staff that position from 8:00 AM till midnight. So, that's what we currently are doing. It's not what was originally budgeted, but that's what we're currently doing. So, when we talk about 10, we mean nine fu, full-time firefighters and day attendance to the very best of our ability to get all of them that we can to fill those hours, and if not, to have a firefighter come in and fill that, that shift.
So, there'll always be 10 from 8:00 AM till midnight?
Midnight. So, can you go back again?
And when we're talking about the day attendants, on page 26 in the budget book, under line item 8107 for part-time wages for emergency medical support, that is where the day attendant-
That's right.
-would be located. Okay. Thank you.
So, so anyway, so we did some ca, we did some crazy number crunching the past couple of days, and you were asking me, my, my eyes were red, that's why. So, so anyway, we, if you look, we do some calculations later on that we'll talk about. It's, it's basically 5,840 hours, it's 16 hours, which is from midnight, from eight to midnight is 16 hours, times, times 365 days. So, and, and we're going to, we did a three-year average. Right now, we're down a little bit, but we did a three-year average, and typically, 30% of those shifts go unfilled by day attendants, because we don't have enough to actually fill that shift. So, one of the things that really came to light is that we really need to aggressively and almost continuously be looking for these day attendants, so that we don't need to fill them in with firefighters. So, you know, I, I think we, you know, as I said, I think we need to actually put a program together where we can get people, because they're, they continually move on, maybe. And we've actually hired some of them as our own firefighters, because we've, you know, gotten to know them. So, here is, I, I could get into the weeds here a little bit- So, here is, I, I could get into the weeds here a little bit, and I'm gonna probably look to my friends for some help. But, so currently, we are, and when I say current staffing, I mean, what is in last, this current year that we're in's budget, not the modification that we've since made recently. So, what was in the budget was that we would staff to eight. So, if not, if somebody called in sick or was on vacation, we wouldn't fill that person, and we would have a one, one daytime attendant until midnight, from eight to midnight. So, the way the apparatus works in that configuration, and Assistant Chief Duke can help me a little bit with that, because he's talking about the mathematics, you have to put, you have, you have, so you have nine people. I'm gonna let you explain it. I, I'm sorry.
So, they, they have nine people, and because of the mathematics, you can't run a vehicle with one person on it. So, when they have nine on, when they had eight plus one, they had four on the engine, three on engine two, and that, and then one full-time person and one daytime attendant on ambulance one to make the nine people. So, as...
So, in the second, in the second box there, you see three, and you see right next to it, engine two slash ambulance two. I believe that's at the south station, and what they do is they have three people over there, and they either three, all three get on engine two, or all three get on ambulance two. Yes?
Good for me. Check me out.
And operationally, we were running about 15 shifts per month on average this way, with a full, full eight plus the one's daytime attendant. The proposed staffing of, that we started in December of 2019 would be that we'd staff to nine plus the one daytime attendant for a total of 10. And by doing that, three people would be on engine one, three people would be on engine two or ambulance two and so, at the south station. One per, one full-time person plus one part-time person until midnight would be on ambulance one. And then we were able to, we're able to staff either the rescue one and ambulance three or ladder one. So, that makes up the 10 people. And then if we, and that began in December that we started the operationally staff that way. In the far right corner, the grant staffing, is if we get the grant, we'd be 10 full-time firefighters plus one daytime attendant. And we'd do three on engine one, three on engine two or ambulance two. We still have that one full-time person plus the part-time person on ambulance one. And we'd be able to run rescue one, ambulance, either rescue one, ambulance three, or ladder one, and there would be three personnel on that to make the total of 11. And that's if we get the grant funding.
So, does anybody have any questions on this particular slide? No. Okay. Oh, Barbara, yes.
So, what happens between midnight and 8:00 a.m.?
What, I think what you can see is, if you look at the calls, you don't, there's not a lot of reds.
Yeah.
I, I think, right?
I know, I looked at the one, and there wasn't, there was only a couple of instances of ALS.
Yeah, because, and I think the, the fire department has been very reasonable in that, that they haven't said we have to keep them. They're just asking for, you know, they haven't asked to have, have them be on that because they don't feel that it's particularly urgent.
And after midnight, the captain shuffles his staff, so that vehicles are covered.
Okay, so basically, we come to three options. Option three is my recommendation. Option one would be to hire four new firefighter paramedics for a total of 10 plus one day attendant for the entire year at a cost of $495,850. Option two, hire four firefighter paramedics for a total of 10 plus one day attendant for half a year. So, one is, it's not, doesn't exactly come out the same way because you have to buy uniforms and things like that. It's all-inclusive. So, that's $260,324, which basically would mean that we hired them in January. Both option one and option two, whether or not you believe we have the opportunity to, that we have the ability to get a grant. If you select option one or two, you have, you have eliminated the possibility of getting the grant because you have said, "We can afford this and we're gonna pay for it." Option three is the one that I'm recommending, which is to increase the overtime budget to cover nine firefighters, basically doing the same thing that we're doing right now. So, we increase the overtime budget from what we have to cover nine firefighter paramedics plus one day attendant for the entire next year, and apply for the grant and see... And reassess. Yes. So, no, really. So, okay. So, I don't know if you want to see all this. I could see Bill with his calculator. He loves his, doing his numbers. So, basically, we did a whole bunch of calculations, which we'll hand out the calculations to you because they're very, they're very complicated because, as you know, we added some overtime in there, and so we had to add it and subtract it out. We, so the calculation, this is how the calculation goes. The firefighter paramedic coverage to nine represents $73,672. Daytime attendant coverage, which is approximately 30% of the time?
Thirty percent.
Thirty percent of the time, which we showed before, would give you 60, another 60,000, add in the benefits, and then, and that would, that would be, okay, so it'd be $134,518 that, that needed to be added to the firefighter overtime line. And then various benefit lines would be an additional $50,875. And then, because we didn't break them down between which one is retirement yet, we'll have that all later. And then wages part-time, we would reduce that by $16,679 because that's too much. We had, we basically had it as though it were always staffed with part-time ambulance attendants, and it's not. And then the, the corresponding benefits from that. And that's where we come up with $166,000, $690, $391.
Approximately.
Approximately. Thank you. So, you know, as I said, we, we did a lot of real soul-searching on this. I think that the charts and things, if you go around the room and you look at them and you see all the red on there, it's, it's concerning to me. I don't, I don't have the, the nitty-gritty, as I said, like smoking gun kind of thing reasons for you, but I, I can show you, you know, the results. And for that reason, it's, I'm not, as you know, I am not a person to easily add a half a million dollars to a budget without feeling fully confident that that amount of money needs to be added forever. So, I had a chance to speak with the chief and some of his staff about what they thought of this option, and they were, they looked at it favorably. So, and I, I very, very much want to apply for this grant. So, that's all I have.
Okay. Anybody, Barb?
So, I just want to clarify. Your recommendation is to go with option three and to apply for the FEMA grant as well.
Right.
Just one more thing. In any of these options, we can come up with $167,000 in additional revenue. So, there'll be maybe $30,000 in additional ambulance revenues, for instance, so I can bump up ambulance for a bit, and revenue, and then I can, I scraped the bottom of the barrel of the budget and was able to come up with the remaining so that we would have $167,000 to cover that and not increase the budget increase that I've already proposed of 31 cents. And the same would apply to either one of those options, is that there would be another $167,000 that you could reduce from that.
Nancy?
I'll just try to cut to the chase because we can debate here back and forth for a long time. First of all, I'm impressed with all the data, and thank you very much because that's exactly the kind of data we need in order to make a determination. Clearly, if the trend was dramatically, not dramatically, but even an increase in total number, that would give us confidence in order to justify the hiring of four more. On the other hand, we also have to acknowledge, with all the building that's going on, it is a probability that in the future, we're going to see that trend go up. So, I don't think we're gonna put it off the table that that's not going to be needed. I think we all acknowledge it will be. But I think this is a very smart, in my personal opinion, interim resolution that everyone seems to be okay with. It fulfills the need of the community, the firefighters. My understanding is they're comfortable with this as well, going with a grant. And on this page that you talked about, the proposed staffing and the grant staffing, that's exactly the kind of data you need for the grant. Okay? So, this kind of data that's here is exactly the data that you need to put into the grant. Okay? So, it's, it's, it's useful for us, but it's gonna be pivotal for you because that's exactly what they need to look at. So, I think it's a good interim decision, and I'm fully in, in support of it. I don't think, see anything down on it. I think it fulfills the need, it covers it for now. Our eyes are wide open for the future, and we're doing the grant, and hopefully, if we get it, that addresses that. If not, we'll have to deal with that in the future, too. Still look at the data. And I think it's very clear and obvious, so I'm in full support of exactly what you've proposed. And that's it.
Anybody else? Peter?
Yeah, maybe I lost it in the explanation. Now, I, I, I saw the, the statistics that were provided, that when we need mutual aid, when we provide mutual aid, are those statistics here, does that, when we, is that, our, you know, let's say we've got our, we send an engine with three people. Is that included in being maxed out?
Yes, sir. If that contributed to us being maxed out, it would be included in that chart that you have in front of you that shows the total calls. And also, there's the slide that shows the, the breakdown of mutual aid received versus mutual aid given as a total number per year.
Yeah, I saw that, too. So, I just was wondering where that played out in here when we're helping other communities.
Yep. So, that would contribute to the, that would contribute in the, on that month of July, wherever it would show up as mutual aid given on one of the right-hand columns, you would see a number in that box.
And this is kind of an aside, but it's part of your question, Matt, is, you know, we, and you raise a valid point of 10 multi-story buildings. And I'm not sure, and maybe Tom or Bill who are on the planning board, are they building these buildings with elevators in them now? Are these apartment buildings? So, so they do have apartments, so if an ambulance arrives with two people, they can get the stretcher in and get up there and... Okay, because I, I'm envisioning part of the time, you know, what you're talking about, triple-deckers in Charlestown or something.
We don't have a lot of those, fortunately.
And that's, you know, and that's what I was curious about. I, I, I like this, and I was actually doing the numbers to see what the overtime rate would be to go 10 and 1, but it, it's a pretty high number. It's up around 310,000. So, that almost makes it right now not worth it, especially in light of the...
It would be way more than that, Peter. The reason why you can't do it from the numbers that you have is because we had already added overtime to the retire, to the account. So, it's not, it's an additional $72,000 to the 40-some-odd that we already added. So, it would be much more than that.
It may, you know, and I'd be curious to hear from Lieutenant Dubreal and the chief, too, is, and then maybe it's the elephant in the room, is the one and three schedule. Is that, is that part of the problem we're having with staffing? Should be, we'd be looking at, and I know it's contractual, but should we be looking at a different type of schedule as opposed to one on and three off? Maybe I can get an answer from everybody.
If you're looking for an opinion, mine is no. We should not look at a different schedule.
Okay. You don't think that that's part of our staffing?
I...
We don't have a problem with firefighter staffing. It's the part-time ambulance, and they're on the individual eight-hour shifts.
I mean, I know it's contractual, and it sounds like everybody likes it. I'm just wondering if that's half the battle. Now, when we look at the day shift, four to eight, chief, we see the, the nine firefighters or eight right now and one, one attendant?
Nine firefighters and one EMS attendant.
But that doesn't take into effect that you're working, the assistant chiefs are working, the fire inspector who's a firefighter, correct? So, we actually have during the day...
We have additional people during the day when you have that large call, that big fire, that second alarm, that working fire, where you need to fill those other positions, where the safety officer, incident commander, operations. Those are those positions that are not filled now during a normal call. But as the call escalates, those positions have to be filled for safety. So, that's where the assistant chiefs, the chief, the fire marshal, those fall into those plays because they have their own job to do anyway, and they'll fall into play when that big incident occurs to fill those slots.
And so, during the day, though, there are, much like there at the police department, you've got the police...
Yep, that is correct. Yep.
Deputy chief and all those guys there.
Yep.
So, it wouldn't be fair to say that, you know, well, jeez, we've got four sectors and a supervisor.
Correct.
So, and I think people need to know that on the, on the day shift, too, so...
And most of the assistant chief and myself, we live in town, so we're available 24/7. So, if there's a larger call comes in or where we think command structure needs to be established, then we, we go to those calls.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the staffing? Lon?
No, no, let Lon go. Let Lon go.
I need someone to refresh my mind. When we initially heard about the SAFE grant, I thought I understood that any increase in the effort by the town or towards the fire department put the grant in jeopardy.
No, what we said was adding firefighters, we're asking to add firefighters. And when you, I, I see what you're saying, but no, we don't understand it to be that way. We understand it that if the town can afford four firefighters, and, you know, it's, it would be a real, real struggle to do that. I just want to get that on the record. That, that we would, well, you can add overtime. It's, it's like an emergency thing to do. I look at it that way.
Thank you.
Just to add on to that, in fact, it adds data. Because if you, it adds data for the grant, to justify the grant. Because if, in fact, and you're not even talking about meeting standards. You're talking about meeting the needs of the town presently. And if we approve the overtime, that could be part of the documentation that goes into the grant to justify the positions. Okay? Whereas if we fill the positions, basically, you can't go for a grant and say, "In place of." That's a no-no with grants. So, what, what we're saying is, and justifiably, we're talking a half a million dollars that we're going to do, but we're able to address it tentatively for the overtime. And that would not, in fact, that would add to the grant information, so it would not be against it.
So, I just want to add that I'm full, did you want to say something?
I got a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Eileen, AC Duke and chief and Captain Dubreal, thank you for the presentation. And I agree with Councilor Harrington, the data's impressive, and I'm very happy that you all were able to bring it to us tonight. So, thank you. Just a couple of basic questions. How many part-time day attendants do we currently have on staff?
Until recently, I mean, very recently, we had five, and now we just barely hired two, so we have seven. Until recently, I mean, very recently, we had five and now we just barely hired two, so we have seven.
And do you know the average weekly hours that they put in?
I don't know that we looked at it from a weekly thing. We just looked at it from an annual thing to say that it was generally, when we had, over the past couple of, probably three years, we've had between nine, eight and ten people and that they, they filled the hours that were needed seventy percent of the time.
What currently, right now at the department, let me retract and rephrase. How many vacancies do we have at the department right now, including those that are on disability, if any? Okay, so, so as far as the rank and file, we're fully staffed. We have no vacancies or anybody out on disability. Okay, okay. Coming back to the day attendance, have you looked at our wages in comparison to other communities that have part-time employees and are we comparable?
Yes, I'm not sure if, you might not have been at this, that particular meeting. I don't think I was actually. We, Sharon and Paul came in maybe three or four meetings ago, or maybe it was more, and talked to you about increasing the wages for the day attendance. And I'm not sure that we used that exact term, but that's what we were talking about was we wanted to get the paramedic level and the, the advanced EMTs up to comparable wages with the area, the area providers that we'd basically be competing with.
Okay, and right now, I know it's probably, how much of our overtime, the percentage, how much have we spent in overtime percentage-wise so far this year?
We'll, we'll give it to you. I'm not really sure that it's particularly relevant because, because we're, you know, we're through a part of, part of the year where we were doing staffing to, basically to seven.
I understand that. I'm just...
Oh, okay.
I'm just curious to know, because we're, you're putting together a plan that's including overtime and making a larger commitment to day attendance. I just would like to know where we stand on the overtime budget so that I can do a compare contrast of what we're doing now versus what you're proposing to do with the fire department. To me, where I, where I said, for me, I think it's kind of important.
Okay, so when did we start the nine? Was that December, all of December or the... Okay, so we start, so there's not much day, so if we looked at, you know, the end of December, you would probably see a fair representation of what it looked like to staff to eight and not necessarily fill the daytime attendance.
And that's fair, okay. I'll wait till I have more questions, but I think it's more budgetary, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, I appreciate it. Eileen, thank you.
Bill, it was thirty-nine percent.
Thirty-nine percent so far this year? Okay, thank you, appreciate it both. Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. For your BLS calls, are you rolling with two on the ambulance, on the rig?
Whoops. My chair almost got away. That would have been embarrassing.
I have that problem all the time.
The answer is yes. We roll two on the ambulance all the time. The additional staffing that we show on whether it's a BLS call or an ALS call responds on another piece of apparatus, typically an engine, occasionally a ladder truck. And that way, they're able to, if needed, they can go to the hospital with a patient. If not needed, they'll return in service and be available for the next call.
And for the ALS, and for those who don't know, that's the advance calls, you're rolling with five somehow, some way. Now, if, when they're, they get there and the five aren't needed, they can drop to four, even though they're transporting, are you returning to service, anybody, at that point?
Yeah, so we respond to ambulance with just two personnel on it all the time, other than in very unusual circumstances. So at any, at any call, we can return all but two personnel.
Right.
At whatever point in the call, they're no longer needed.
Right. And, you know, just for those folks who may be at home and not, the numbers have increased. Interesting how two thousand nineteen dropped over two thousand eighteen. But now, and do those calls, your call, I'm looking at your EMS call information, does that also include those that went to mutual aid as well?
Yes, all of those call stats include mutual aid, whether they're fire or EMS, mutual aid is included in there.
But I think it's, you know, important for everybody to remember that we have a hundred and twenty-one units of elderly going in. So we have anywhere from a hundred and twenty-one to two hundred and forty-two elderly new to our community. So we, I think we can safely say we will have an increase in our ALS calls and hopefully you're not coming to my house.
Mr. Chairman, can I follow up?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Councilor Haley raised this, a couple salient points. I guess the question I would ask you, are the percentage of the ALS calls that we treat, level one, level one calls go to CMC, is that correct?
Not necessarily. The first, the first choice is patient choice. They get to go where they, where they choose, where they're comfortable or where they've been seen before. In certain instances, we will, the crew will make a recommendation based on symptoms or something they see. They may make a recommendation of a specific facility. But for the most part, it's patient choice. And most patients we encounter have a choice. They have a place that they choose to go.
Okay, so knowing that, what is, I guess, out of the ALS calls that you have, what is the percentage of calls to go to Catholic Medical Center versus the ones that go to Southern New Hampshire or St. Joe's? Do you happen to know?
I don't have that data off the top of my head. We could get it.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I guess I'd be waiting to, and I kind of saw everybody nod their heads a little bit, but I, right now, obviously, I think option three is the most viable at this time and it seems to make sense. And so I, I don't want to assume anything, so I'm taking it that not only management, the chief and the assistant chief, but the staff and the rank and file firefighters are all in agreement. Is there an opinion on that?
Yeah, so this question was posed to us. I didn't have a member of the firefighters' union with me when this question was posed to us, unfortunately. Speaking for the officer's side of things, I think it's the most fiscally responsible way to go for the town, presuming we're going to continue to seek out the safer grant. I think with the safer grant being the light at the end of the tunnel, everyone can buck up, you know, keep working hard, keep filling these positions. And I spoke to a lot of the firefighters, they're all for filling these positions and making sure that everything is filled because they feel it's that important to serve the community and make sure that we're doing the best we can for the community. So at times, it's definitely hard to do. It's hard to work extra, work that overtime and things like that, but the firefighters I spoke to all said, this is absolutely worth it. Let's go down this road and keep going for that safer grant and trying for more personnel, so.
Was the union leadership invited here to voice their opinion as well on this?
No.
No, okay. I'm just curious because they represent the, I mean, the captain represents the officers, correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess I represent the floor.
Okay, all right, thank you.
The boots on the ground.
Benley?
I actually think it's quite important that we have a comfort level, and I do. A lot of what Nancy said moments ago, I'm totally on board with. The safer grant, being able to have an opportunity at that makes all the sense in the world. Right, all your comments, I agree with Nancy. We can tell that at some point in the very near future, with the construction that's gone on, the type of housing that it's coming at the place, those things will have to happen, but I think it's very responsible and I, I get the input, you know, that I need it to make my decision. And I'm supportive of option three and the recommendation the town manager made.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. A.C. Duke, in general, when a new firefighter is hired by the town of Merrimack, how long does it take for that individual to be onboarded into the, into the department to be fully operational? From the time you do your RFQ to doing your interviews to...
Just so I'm clear, you're asking the time it takes from when the grant has gotten to the time somebody actually...
I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about the grant.
Regardless of how they're added, from the time that we make a decision we're going to add staff to the time that they actually show up at the firehouse.
How long does it, how long does it actually, actually take?
Are you asking how long before they, just so I'm clear, how long before they show up at the firehouse or how long before they're fully functional? Okay, I'll give you both. Let's see, I would say it is sixty to seventy-five days conservatively from the time we decide we're, from the time we post a position to the time somebody walks through the door, and it may be longer. From the time they walk through the door to the time they are functional, if you will, depends in large part on, on their background and their experience. Obviously, they're all certified, but they may not be experienced. But I would say at a minimum, four to eight months before they're, you know, fully up to speed with our procedures, policies, comfortable with our equipment. And they're, the town, of course, thank you, and before the officers and the rest of the firefighters are comfortable with their skills and abilities to know that they're, you know, they're fully up to speed.
As opposed to hiring somebody from, let's just say, the city of Manchester who's been with the force for ten years that brings a skill set and hits the ground rotten?
Somebody of that, of somebody of that nature might be closer to the three-month mark than the eight versus somebody with less experience. But again, as the town manager alluded to, they still need to learn the town, they need to be able to get around, they need to learn the intricacies of our equipment, that sort of thing.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A.C., thank you.
I echo Nancy's comments a hundred percent, backing up what I mean, suggesting, and I think that this is the right way to go. It does ask the firefighters to step up and work a little harder.
More hours. Yeah, I was, my mic wasn't on. And so I appreciate that and I'm assuming that they're comfortable with that based on what we're hearing here. I know in the past when we tried to cut the overtime in the fire department, where there was some grumbling that people weren't going to have that extra income and suddenly it was lost and stuff like that, so there was concern. So I'm hoping that they're, they're comfortable with that, at least for the next year or so, to try and understand exactly where things are going to go and leave some, some ability to see how this fluctuates and why there's a dip last year and stuff like that. Granted, there is some construction going on. Whether that gets fully built, whether it gets fully housed, whether it really brings in two-point-six people per unit or not, are all questions we're going to find out as we go along. This gives us the opportunity and the flexibility to work that way, so I, I'm encouraged by that option and thank you for bringing that forward. If there's not any other questions on staffing, do we want to go into the budget itself? Does anybody have questions? We, I apologize to the town and to the people that came that were kind of going over on this piece of our budget review. We are going to get to the town council meeting. Hopefully as shortly as possible.
If I may be so bold...
Go ahead.
I just, I think that the firefighters are, and the chief and assistant chief are kind of interested to hear if you're, if all of you are prepared to answer whether or not you're supportive, for those of you who have not actually said whether they're supportive of option three or not. Are you prepared to say anything or, because I, if, if people are supportive, I'd like to have them go away feeling encouraged. No, but if, only if you want to, but I just, I'm sensing, I'm sensing support here and I just...
Do you want a poll from each of us?
Not, only if you want to.
I have no problem. I support option three. Get the firefighters what they need for this year and as it's been said, let's, let's look and see what happens as we go forward.
I asked the questions because at the onset, I had, I had trepidations. I still, to some extent, have trepidations about, about option three versus some of the other options. But at the end of the day, I have to realize that it's you three that wear the badge. I don't. I have to rely on you and Eileen to make the professional decisions and recommendations to me so that I can make the best decision possible. And I do support option three. I, I was going to tell you, I wanted some time to really think about it, but, you know, I, I do support option three. But I'm, I'm not going to lie to you, the community is growing and I don't want the folks down at the firehouses to feel like they're shorthanded and to feel like that, that from behind the roster from here that, that we're tone deaf. I don't, I don't want that feeling at all. I want to make sure that everybody down there feels that they've got the equipment and they've got the hours and that they're physically able to do the job. I mean, their safety is paramount to me because if, if they're physically not able to do the job, they're not going to be able to help the patient or the, or the issue that's going on that we're asking them to do. And that's really the bottom line. I want to make sure that they're able to answer the call. And Captain Dubryl, I think you, I think gave me a level assurance that they're prepared to, to answer that particular call. Okay, so I do support option three, but I, you know, this is, for me, this is a one-year thing. You know, the next couple of years is going to be, you know, depending on what units are built in this community, we're going to, we're going to have to be proactive and attack that. And I mean that, and I'm saying that not just to give it to the community, we're going to need to attack it to make sure it's fully staffed and we're keeping up with the ALS issues, which I don't see going down. I see those creeping up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Barb?
Yeah, and I didn't come right out and say it, but I hope you figured out I was supporting you anyways. As the captain and I were talking earlier before the meeting, you know, I've walked in some of those shoes. The other shoes I care not to walk in because I do not run to fire and God bless you for doing that. And I do promise to bring more donuts, but I definitely support, you know, this particular, I think it's a good short-term as well as we have a long-term plan and I think that's the best of both worlds.
Do you want to comment or? You don't have to, I mean, we...
It's been an interesting discussion.
Okay, so do you want to brief us on any, any significant changes in the budget itself, other than staffing, please?
Looking at the time and stuff, I think we've gone through the budget very well and there were some increases, but nothing that was major. The major accolade here was the staffing aspect, so rather than spending a lot of time going line on them, line on them, if somebody has questions, I think that would probably be the best course to attack and then we could move forward.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on the budget?
Okay, I have, you probably have received a couple of emails regarding this budget, so I'm going to ask the questions. One was the staffing, which we've already addressed, but the other is equipment. There has been some scuttlebutt that your equipment is not in good shape and that you don't have enough of and whatever. And personally, I have not heard that. I know that there is a CIP that we respond to. And that's a place where, that's a capital improvement plan, just for the public, where we plan on, the fire department also, but also every department projects what they may need in years to come and we end up saving for that. And I think next year we have a pumper or something.
Yeah, what, I think what may be...
So I'd like to respond to what the status is.
Concern was, we don't believe the equipment is bad, okay? There was a time when we were starting to put the CIP together years ago where we're doing evaluations on the apparatus and we were having some issues. And we went through NFPA to determine what their recommendation was for apparatus and they're looking somewhere, first-line piece of apparatus runs between nine and ten years. And at that point, I think we put the, it was about eight years ago, we put the CIP in place, I think went through all the exact numbers and we used a number of ten. So what we did is we put the engines in and we'd replace every, we replaced the frontline piece engines every ten years. NFPA also recommends that a apparatus is, life expectancy of an apparatus is twenty years. These are diesel, you know what I mean? They're trucks, they're not, they're not little cars. They're designed to last hundreds of thousands of miles, they're designed to be put through their paces. And so what the plan on the CIP was, is that if, when engine one is bought, okay, in ten years, we'd buy another engine one. Okay, so the first-line piece would only run ten years and that's in the CIP. and that's in the CIP. When, and, and what we did to the CIP was, and it's a little messed up now, because we pushed an engine out from last year to this year, for some other reasons, and so we're buying that engine this year. But what happens is engine two is five years, is about five years off of engine one. So every five years, you're buying your front-line piece, which swaps engine one and engine two out for their ten-year cycle. Then what happens there is those two apparatus will go and replace engine three and engine four.
Okay, but the bottom line is, which is the present status.
Correct.
What is the present status of the equipment that you have? Is it running properly? Are you having any difficulties?
I had a chance to go over and talk with the chief and assistant chief, and the captains and lieutenants, to talk about the, the equipment that they have, mainly the vehicles. And what they told me is that the, in my mind, we, as I said to them, there is no reason in the world why we wouldn't have the best equipment around. We put two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars away every single year for fire equipment. This year, I think I increased it to three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars, and that doesn't include the ambulances. So I was really surprised to hear that we had issues with equipment. First, again, first time I ever heard it. But I will tell you that they said that it wasn't the ambulances, ambulances weren't the problem. They said that obviously, the ladder truck, which is probably a one-point-five-million-dollar purchase, has been pushed off forever. But their main issue has to do with the pumper trucks, the fire trucks. So when he talks to you, he'll tell you about those.
Okay. So currently, right now, our engine three is the oldest in the fleet. That would have already been replaced last year, if we hadn't pushed that out. And then, so it would have been, so it would have replaced that vehicle, making engine one a new vehicle.
I'm so sorry. I just, she's just asking you, what is the condition of your current vehicles?
I mean, are they functional?
Everything's functional, except for engine one. We've had a problem with engine one, to where it's been in the shop for the period of, I think, Assistant Chief Duke is working with it.
And that's our newest vehicle.
No. Engine two is the newest.
Okay.
What happened with engine one, we bought that over ten years ago, when our, at that time, our engine, first new engine piece running out of station one was malfunctioning, and then we ended up, because of the need, bought a demo for that. It's a demo rig.
Engine one has had some transmission problems. We have sent it back to the manufacturer, all the way down to Providence, to fix engine one. When it returned, it still had some transmission problems. We're working through one or two more issues with the engine. Right now, we're hoping to get it back online shortly.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
I get wordy sometimes.
So as soon as that's resolved, then the, and we get the new one, which is already in the pipeline.
Right. We should be, once that's resolved, that engine should be running properly again, and all our engines should be, knock on wood.
Correct.
Operational.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sorry.
Any other questions? Did you have a question? Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You weren't here for this conversation, chief, so I apologize. But when the police department presented, we got to talking about Ospey Mountain and the equipment, as it relates to the communications piece. I know, years ago, we, the fire department had to respond to the FCC to go, narrowbanding, I think is what it's called. Okay, so the question I'm getting at is, in the conversation that I had with, with Chief Roy at that time, was regarding coverage, communication coverage throughout the entire town. And she had indicated that, for the police department, that there was, there was some dead spots, for the lack of a better term. Does the fire department have that similar problem with the narrowbanding? Do we want to consider moving to digital? Or do you think narrowbanding remains the more, more better and functional option for the fire department, as to going to a, to a digital system? So that's...
Well, what I've done is, that whole project, who's assigned to Captain Dubreil here, so he has all the data, right up to, actually, we're talking memos, we just went back and forth today. So I'm going to turn that over to him, so I can get the, he'll talk probably less, and then say more.
You hear that bus coming across?
The bus? I think that was, I think that was engine one.
So, to answer your question, yes. The FCC narrowbanding mandate did cause issues. We have had issues since 2014, 2015, on and off. We've had some known dead spots that we have been kind of working through. Our vendor is Ospey Mountain Electronics. We have been working with them recently, within the last year or so, to identify where those dead spots are, and come to us with solutions on how to fix this. We have explored the option of digital technology, which the police use, versus our analog technology. I've spoke to two different vendors. I've gone around to Ospey, talked to some other vendors, and quite honestly, no one can give me compelling evidence to say that digital is going to solve our problem. What we need is more coverage sites throughout the town. In other words, antennas to pick up our signals, transmit our signals, and then transmit our signals back. It's, it's called simulcast. That's really kind of the way to go. It is going to require a significant amount of money to be able to do that. Each one of these sites is very costly. And so at this point, I'm exploring all of our options, and how we might get better coverage in town.
So do you, have you already identified specific sites in town that would be suitable for the simulcasting antennas that you need to be able to?
Yeah, I have. One of the particular sites is the Merrimack Premium Outlets. When that place was first built, we put a, what we call a voter repeater system in that building. I believe it was struck by lightning. I think it's been repaired, but it's never worked quite right.
Okay.
It doesn't have the elevation that we need to get a good broadcast of signal down to the low-lying areas in the southern end of town. Because of that, we've proposed putting an antenna on the tower that's directly behind the Merrimack Premium Outlets. We have, there's a lot of technical jargon that goes along with this stuff, so I've asked Ospey to provide that. They've provided it. We've got it out to American Tower, and yesterday, the day before, American Tower actually got me a quote back.
And that quote was?
It's a three-thousand-dollar engineering study fee that's upfront, non-negotiable, and then it's about, what was that, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month to be on their tower.
That's doable.
Okay.
That doesn't include the install or the equipment. My assumption is that we can relocate the equipment that's in the premium outlets onto that tower, and be operational.
So you'd be looking at labor cost to remove it, labor cost to put it onto the...
That's correct.
Okay. So, and that, and based, I guess my question was, you indicated to me that it got struck by lightning, and that they were, that they fixed it. Do you expect to have any issues from when you remove it to being putting it? I mean, to me, it almost, it almost begs the question, do we want to consider buying something new, if we're going to go through the process of moving from one location to another? I'd rather...
Yeah. I believe it was all replaced with new equipment. I don't know, that wasn't under my purview. It's under the communications division. So they, they kind of handled that at the time. So I'm not exactly sure what equipment's sitting in there right now. My assumption is it's all new, if it was struck by lightning.
Fair enough.
But...
I thought it was brand-new, then it got struck by lightning, and you fixed it. That's, that was...
No, no.
Okay, I misunderstood.
No, you're correct, because it was new when the mall was built. It then got struck by lightning. I think it was replaced. So...
Okay.
I would assume it's new, but I'm not sure. But there's no elevation sitting, our antenna sits on top of a roof on that building. It's a flat roof. There's not a good projection of our signal down to the low-lying areas of town. But that's not the only area that is having problems. We have problems along the riverbanks, which are the really low-lying areas, and one of the proposals being made is to put an antenna site down on the wastewater facility. Each one of these sites is roughly to install and equip sixty thousand dollars to put in place. So, you know, what we really need is some studies to determine exactly where the weak spots are. We kind of have an idea, but there's a way to do what's called a propagation study.
That was the word I was trying to think of.
Yeah, they can actually do that. I have another vendor that's offered that to me. And we can determine exactly where our weak spots are, and what it's going to take to fix those spots.
Do you anticipate having a presentation to us soon, or within the next couple of months?
I've been asking for a couple of months now for this, from Ospey Mountain Electronics, and haven't got an answer back. I do have another vendor that is in line, and said he'd be willing to do it for us.
I would feel really good if, and I'm speaking only for myself, because I don't speak for the rest of my colleagues here, but I'd like to see that sooner than later. I really would.
Yep.
Because I think, because we've talked about, we've talked about the growth that's going on in this community. And the only way that we can manage that growth is, you guys need to be able to talk to each other. And it's not going to mean anything if you can't talk to each other, especially if you're down South End of Town, Harris Pond, that kind of thing. So. There, everybody else has their hands raised, so I'm going to...
Eileen, do you want to jump in?
I just want to say something from a procedural standpoint. So the chief, and the captains, and lieutenants, and I are all discussing this already. We've talked about putting together various things to move this forward to the thing, but it's really, I would prefer that the council not speak, direct the staff to...
Eileen, I apologize.
Okay, that's fine.
No, I apologize.
But I am, I'm in process, though. I'm, I'm working on it.
Please accept my apology.
I do. I do. Thank you.
I should have gone through you. I apologize.
Peter?
Cap, if I recall right, police and fire share the same voters and the same repeater locations?
Locations, yes.
Okay. And I guess, in dealing with the police side of it, they're digital, you guys are analog. Would it, and I know you said that you, no one's told you any different on which is better, but if you were going to consider it, if the digital equipment and the digital basis, or foundation is there throughout all the, all these locations, might it be cheaper to go with digital then?
I don't think it's that simple.
You know what?
I don't think you can simply jump onto your existing digital system and operate. I think I've asked that from Ospey in the past, and I don't think it's that simple. Not to mention the fact that we already have, a lot of our voters are already in place. We've already paid for them. We might as well utilize them. The difference between that digital and the analog signal is that the digital signal is good, and then it just drops right off. Whereas, an analog signal will start out strong, and then kind of dwindle off, but go well beyond sometimes where that digital signal is. So they both have their strengths and weaknesses. The digital signal tends to be very, very clear. It, you know, I listen to you guys all the time.
Until it's not.
And it's like, boy, it's really great, until it's not. It also has some penetration issues inside of buildings and whatnot, whereas I may be able to get my signal through analog. So there are strengths and weaknesses on both sides. Both vendors haven't told me definitively, yeah, you definitely want to go digital, that's the way to go, it's going to help you. I've heard arguments both ways. So if I did, I'd be coming to you guys and saying, please.
Let's focus on this budget, and not try to solve their problem for them, at this point. I mean, I understand that we want to be involved, and we can have discussions, as Eileen said. So if you have questions on the budget, numbers that are presented, or you think more numbers need to be presented, or something, you know, good time to speak up now. Did you have something, Nancy?
Nope. I'm finally ready to be quiet.
Bill?
One more question, for either Eileen or Paul. Two thousand fourteen through June of two thousand nineteen, we've, we've had revenues from the ambulance service, anywhere from seven-hundred thousand to about eight-hundred, eight-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. Okay? This budget was eight-fifty. You're proposing eight-seventy-five. My question is, with those revenues, do they get put into the general fund, or are they dedicated back to the fire department to attack, and pay for some of the things that are budgeted for them?
They don't directly go, so there isn't like a separate fire department fund, but, you know, so yes, it does go into the general fund, where the expenses for the firefight department. So you don't, you know, when we look at it, we don't look, look at revenues and expenditures by department. But as I said to you, that as we are looking to, you know, to add this over, this particular overtime, we will most likely be bringing in more ambulance revenue at the same time. And then I will, as part of this budget, be able to increase the ambulance budget by about, revenue budget. So no, there is not a direct correlation that's shown in the budget.
And based off of your answer to me, it probably wouldn't be prudent, whether or not we could legally do so, create a fund where we're taking the ambulance revenues and dedicating it to them.
I don't, I don't think it's really necessary. I mean, you can, you can draw attention to it sometime, if you wanted to. You could say, look, you know, here's what it costs for firefighters, but this is revenue that comes in with it, if you wanted to.
Okay.
But I don't think it's, it's important enough to do...
And that's fair. Okay. Thank you, Eileen.
So, Chief, there's, in line eighty-five oh-two buildings, there's, you asked for a hundred-and-fifteen thousand, and the manager put in fifty thousand. So there's sixty-five thousand, apparently, in kitchen and roof upgrades on station one. Did we decide we can go with that another year, or?
Sorry. We're planning to do it this year.
This year?
Mm-hmm.
That's even better still.
Yes.
Thank you. Does anybody else have questions? Go ahead.
Is that the kitchen or the roof, or the mud that we're planning on doing this year?
We're planning on doing the kitchen this year. So, and the discussion that we had was, it's not going to be things that are stationary. So we're not going to be putting in granite countertops and things like that. Not that we would, anyway, but you know what I mean. Anything that's permanent, that is, that would stay in the building, we wouldn't be replacing right now, with the anticipation that we would, are looking at a new public safety building. We, when we talk about the kitchen, we talk about appliances and things like that, at this point.
Okay. And the roof is still in there, I think, at forty-five thousand, forty-eight thousand. So that's going to get done anyway. Any other questions relative to the fire budget, at this point? Seeing none. Guys, thanks. Appreciate all the data and the information, and the patients.
Is there an opportunity for public comments? We didn't have any in the beginning of the meeting.
We haven't, we haven't even started the town council meeting yet. This has been a budget hearing. So I apologize for our being delayed, but we're going to start the town council meeting in just a moment.
Looking at the agenda, it says public comment. Am I reading this incorrectly? We're not on this agenda, the one that says fire department budget? All right, I'll sit down and wait.
It was public comment beforehand, but you, if you'd like to comment on it at this point, sure, go ahead.
Sure, thank you.
Good evening, town council, and I know the fire department members are leaving, but I thank you guys for all that you do. My name is Scott Adler, Three Deerwood Drive here in Merrimack, and I represent a group called Merrimack Concerned Taxpayers. I want to say, first of all, thank you to you guys for finding a way to at least staff the fire department a little bit better. There's been some significant concerns throughout the community with the lack of staffing. Couple of concerns that I have, just based upon what I've heard, is what happens if we don't get the grant? I mean, I know we're talking about a one-year type of program here right now with the overtime, but what happens if we don't get the grant? And I'm not looking for a response. I don't even think you guys are supposed to respond. I don't even know how any of this works. But, at the end of the day, that's one of my major concerns. What if we don't get it? Are we going to cut the staff back, or are we just going to bite the bullet? So...
No, go ahead.
Okay, so what, what the plan is, that I proposed, was to go through the whole year, at which time that we can apply for the grant. So we would have the entire year to go through it, and funding all the way through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one. And between now and then, we would, if we did not get the grant, which we would find out fairly soon, we would start planning for the following year, as to whether or not we would include four firefighters in there, which, again, because we've already added the overtime, it wouldn't be such a big, huge, we wouldn't, we would reduce the overtime and then add the thing, so it wouldn't be quite such a shock.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. The other question I would have, again, I'm not looking necessarily for response, but, and I listened to the, to the officers and the chief and A.C., but what happens if the, if we do start running and do what I would call staffing issues, because of fatigue or otherwise, and we can't run a ten-plus-one situation as much as we want to? That's something else I think needs to be considered throughout all of this. I know the firefighters are on board right now. I also heard Tom mention that, at one point in time, there was some grumbling... I also heard Tom mention that at one point in time, there was some grumbling because they lost their overtime and that will happen again with, with these folks. It happens in any industry you're in, it doesn't matter. So those are the things that we need to be concerned about. Am I for spending a half a million bucks? No. But at the end of the day, I know that when somebody calls 911, they're not having a good day, right? I mean, I've been fortunate to where I've, I've only had to call twice and both times they weren't on any sort of a mutual aid or, or maxed-out situation. One was a two-year-old that was choking. That's scary. I don't need to have that compounded by, by them being maxed out. So I just wanted to share the, the concerns that, that we as taxpayers have in, in my group and, and again, thank you for searching for ways to make it happen sooner rather than later and while maximizing the opportunity for a grant. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your inputs. So we're going to close this town council meeting for the budget and turn around and open our town council...
Five-minute budget, by opere?
Pardon?
Five-minute by opere?
Yep.
Okay. We need an adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded. Motion made by Nancy, seconded by Bill. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm gone.
That passes 7-0-0. We have five minutes to get reorganized with the...